Welcome, welcome everyone. Thank you so much for coming to What's Up with the Chicago School Board, an urgent conversation on representation and equity. I'm Courtney Horaiza. I'm the Executive Director of Educators for Excellence Chicago. We're a nonprofit and our mission is to ensure that teachers' voices are at every table where decisions are being made about what happens at schools and classrooms, particularly in Chicago Public Schools. School boards play a critical role in making decisions about the rules that govern our classrooms, what is prioritized and funded, and what is not prioritized and not funded, and who leads our district. Chicago's school board has been appointed by the sitting mayor since 1995, and that will change in 2025. The upcoming transition to a board elected by Chicagoans presents a huge opportunity, but also huge potential concerns if we don't get the guardrails right. We're grateful that you're here for this critical conversation tonight, and it's amazing to see folks from so many different backgrounds, perspectives, and organizations all recognizing the urgency of this issue to ensure that students and teachers truly have a board that is doing right by them to make sure that they can thrive. We're so fortunate to have Becky Beebe as our moderator tonight. Becky Beebe is the Bureau Chief for Chalk Beach Chicago. Before coming to Chalk Beach, she spent a decade at WBEZ, Chicago's NPR news station, where she reported on city politics and schools. And you might recognize her voice from her time filling in as anchor and host. Becky's an award-winning journalist whose work has been appeared in The New York Times, The Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and USA Today. She's a graduate of the University of Wisconsin-Madison School of Journalism and Mass Communications and a native of rural central Wisconsin. She currently lives in Chicago's Humble Park neighborhood with her husband and two young sons. I'll hand off the mic to Becky now so she can introduce our panelists and begin the conversation.
Just adjust the microphone. Thank you so much, Courtney. Thank you guys all for being here. This is a great evening. It's, I know, a nice summer night, but it's so nice to be in person and in conversation with everyone tonight. I do want to thank Salsedo for hosting us, and also thanks to Educators for Excellence for bringing everyone together. We have 481 days until these first elections, so time's ticking. And let's get started. I think we should get talking about how this is all going to change the landscape in Chicago. I'll start with the panelist, Mark Franklin. He's right here, and I'll go down the line. Mark is a 30-year teaching veteran at Chicago Public Schools and was a crucial member of the original E4E-Elected School Board Teacher Action Team in 2021 when the law was passed. Dr. Luciana Melendez is a faculty member at Erickson Institute and a former Chicago Public Schools Board member. Brenda Rivera is a CPS mother of an eighth-grade student who is diligently working on his work in the audience right now. She also serves on Kids First Chicago's Parent Advisory Board, working on issues such as advocating for parent priorities on the newly-elected school board. Valerie Leonard convenes Illinois African-Americans for Equitable Redistricting, which was formed in 2021 to serve the interests of Illinois black voters as the General Assembly drafted their new legislative maps. She's also done some work on the proposed maps for the Chicago-Elected School Board. And finally, Ginger Hiltz is the principal of Salsedo Elementary. And again, thank you so much, Ginger, for hosting this conversation tonight. So like I said, time is ticking. And I would like to go back in time a little bit and have Dr. Melendez talk through a little bit about how the elected school board kind of came to be, if you would.
Thank you. Gracias por la ocasión de hablar con ustedes hoy. I'm very, very honored to be here with you, speaking about this very momentous issue.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, thank you. As Becky pointed out, the Chicago School Board has been appointed, whether by the mayor and before by other officials, for more than, I think, 150 years. So this is indeed a momentous occasion. And this was the change to an elected school board came about by, through legislation in Springfield that decided on basically the timetable and the number of members that the board is to have, which is to be increased significantly, from seven to 21. And there are a multitude of issues surrounding the installation of an elected school board. But as others have said before me, and I fully agree, this is also a tremendous opportunity to allow the people of Chicago, the families who have children and interest in the schools, to have true representation in the board.
Mark, I'd like for you to answer that question. I know you were involved with the E4E-Elected School Board Teacher Action Team when the law was being passed. Could you talk a little bit about your experience related to that, the creation of this 21-member school board that we'll be getting soon?
Yes. My reaction is that it was well overdue and that we needed more representation within the schools. As a teacher, we see things all of the time. And, you know, through news media and every other outlet that describes the school board and their role in education. But as a teacher, we're, you know, we're on the ground level. And it was just a great thing for them to come up with this new elected school board, which would pretty much show representation and equity among all the schools and all the stakeholders that are involved.
Valerie, I'd like to hear your thoughts a little bit about the creation of a 21-member school board. And for the audience, just to recap really quickly, the school board will shift to being 21 members starting in January of 2025. The elections will be November of 2024. There will be 10 members elected and 11 still appointed. And then, two years later, they will elect, the city will elect 11, the remaining appointed 11 members. I hope that was clear. But Valerie, could you talk a little bit about how you come to this issue, and in particular, the legislation?
Okay, in terms of the number of board members?
Just how the board got created and what you might hope to see as, from your perspective as an organization?
Okay, and let me step back. It's always easy to be the Monday morning quarterback. I can remember back in 2011, maybe 2012, when we first went through, I guess, circulating petitions for an elected school board. Some organizations did precinct by precinct. We chose to circulate in the 24th ward. There was also, I guess, a move to create a task force that would study other elected school boards around this country and look at best practices. For whatever reason, that idea was nixed. The activist community felt like we should go full steam into an elected school board, which is kind of where we are now. I think the problem we're having, or the quandary we're having, is, one, we're running out of time. There's going to be an election in 2024, and we still don't know what those districts are going to look like. We have differences, I guess, in reporting from the legislature as to how the implementation is going to roll. Are we going to have a situation where we have, of course, we're going to do 10 people, 10 districts, right? And we will have, at some point, 20 districts. But we're going to elect 10 and then have a hybrid board that is going to actually be half of them appointed. So in some cases, there's reports that the mayor will pick 10, and they could come from anywhere, right? But the legislation itself reads that, you know, he will pick one from each district. So I think there's a whole lot in the air. If I were to do this differently, I would have had that task force 10 years ago so that we can kind of flesh this thing out, and we wouldn't be in this quandary now. So sorry about that. That was a long answer to a very short question.
No, that's okay. I understand. And I'd be curious, Brenda, as a parent, I would love for you to just talk a little bit about how you see the change of the school board affecting your life as a parent.
Affected me as a parent?
Yeah. What is it going to change for you, if anything?
Yes. Hello, everyone. For me, I see it as an unbelievable opportunity to actually have access. Because if we have representation, if we vote, we pick this person, then I just feel like we could communicate better. They will be in our community. It will be more accessible. So there will be, like, opening up the lines of communication.
This is a question for everybody, but how do you currently interact with the school board that is appointed? And if you want, Dr. Melendez, you were formerly on the board, and maybe you could start by how maybe you interacted with people.
Well, the rules of the board require that board members make time to meet, have office hours with different constituents. And that is usually done through the wonderful staff at the board office. And they schedule meetings for, depending on the issue at hand, with different board members. Sometimes, or sometimes, individuals ask to meet with a specific board member depending on the issue. You know, ideally, because this, the board is a voluntary position, you know, has been until now, and will continue to be, I think, until the installment of the elected school board. And that's not still clear, how that will go then. I think that that sort of limits somewhat the amount of time that board members can dedicate to meet individually with groups or individuals of the public that have business with CPS. In my experience, all the board members I served with were extremely open and flexible. But, you know, we all had full-time jobs. So it was, that limited our availability sometimes.
Ginger, as a principal, what is your interaction with the existing school board?
The current school board?
Yeah.
So welcome, everyone, to Salsedo. Let me start there. I'm glad you're here. I don't have interaction with the current school board other than headlines and news articles. I just met a former school board member who was here for one of our back-to-school bashes, but didn't have the pleasure of meeting him. So I've never met a real-life school board member.
Until tonight.
Until tonight.
And they're former, I suppose. Dr. Melendez, and I should note, Dwayne Truss, a former board member, is also in the audience. Welcome, Dwayne. So happy you're here. And as a teacher, Mark, what about you? What kind of interaction, if any, do you have with appointed members right now?
Well, it's the same as, well, really haven't had any interactions besides tonight. And I think that with the elected school board, it'll give us more of a voice to, you know, to speak with members of that board. Because it'll be, it'll come from a district where they're all, you know, they're trusted into, you know, finding out solutions and, you know, finding things that are going on. And as a teacher, you know, who else to ask but the teachers? Because we're doing all of the lead work in the schools and things like that. So I think it'll be very important that they develop that relationship unlike the current board that we have now.
Brenda, how about you as a parent? Have you spoken to the board, the appointed board? Or what's your interaction with them?
We're talking about parents.
Currently, yes.
So I work with a lot of CPS parents. And in reality, only when there is, like, an emergency, now all of a sudden, we have to prepare to go to a board meeting or schedule a meeting. So that's been like the only experience that I have had, helping parents sign up, which is a difficult process. And only like in emergency, then when we need to hear back from them. So I'm hoping that that's something that could change for the better.
We're going to get to that. But Valerie, I want to ask you.
Lives, professional, and, you know, rattling cages and all that other stuff. You know, so there are a lot of activists on the board. So I know about half of them from a prior life. And typically, we would be engaged in actions together. So I'm pretty confident that this board will see things from a different perspective than a typical corporate board that we might expect. And I do intend to meet with the president very shortly.
The newly-appointed members. So last, I think it must have been last week, the new mayor appointed six new members of the seven-member school board. And I'm asking all of you this question in part because now I'm going to ask you, when the school board becomes elected, how do you hope to interact with those elected members? And do you have hope that by electing members, they will operate perhaps more like aldermen? Or, and that, you know, not everybody's alderman is responsive, but many are. And so I'm curious to know, what are your wishes for an elected school board in terms of your own, like, relationship with them? And I'll start with Ginger, and we'll come down the line.
I think, you know, building off Mark and Brenda's answers, I guess my hope would be some access. Because first, we have to have a relationship to be able to advocate in a human way currently, but also in the future. I think I have two emotions a little bit. One is scared, you know? I don't, as a principal, I have to be careful about what I say about what and who I say it to. There's a bureaucracy, and there's a chain of command. And that feels to me like skipping, whether it's elected or appointed, skipping the chain of command. So maybe some ground rules for what that looks like. And then also being more informed. If I'm more informed about when that is the right call, without taking a giant leap, that would help me access an appointed or an elected school board. Elected, though, I think there's accountability around access that we don't currently have.
Sure. What about you, Valerie? What are your hopes for an elected representative?
Okay, and not necessarily for this specific group of people, but just in general. I would hope that an elected school board would be more accountable to the people. And I know that sounds cliche. Here to fore, you know, the, well, the school board was accountable to one person, right? Which is the mayor. And I don't care what anybody says, you know, it's still political. So either they're accountable to one person or they're accountable to their districts. And I would much rather be in a situation where they're accountable to their districts. I believe there'll be more transparency. I believe that they'll be more responsive to the community, not just because of who they are. And, you know, I know this group of people to be responsive, but just anybody in that elected position, I think, will be more responsive than people on the board that we had before. And that's, and that's not, that predates my friend Dwayne Truss. It's that. But I think you know what I mean.
Yes, of course. Brenda? What are your hopes for an elected representative school board?
So I think I jumped to this.
A little bit already, yes. But.
Yes, I'm hoping to be represented as a CPS parent myself. And to, like I said, to be able to connect with the school board member that was, that I voted in to defeat. So to have that, be able to develop a relationship where there will be, like, town halls where we can just have conversations. And so there will be opportunity to continuously meet with this person in an open space like this, so that that person will recognize this parent, that parent, they are from my district, they are from my community. I'm representing them, I'm listening. That's what I'm hoping for.
Right, right. Luciana, as a resident of the city?
Well, I think I have multiple hopes. I'm a very optimistic person. What I hope is that the elected school board truly represents, like my fellow panelists have said, the interests and context where the children and families of CPS live in. And every community is different, but there's also a lot of common issues across the CPS community. So really, that the elected members represent the district that they were elected to serve and represent. And that they really, as Brenda said, spend time and effort in developing close relationships with those constituents. So they can bring to the board that invaluable knowledge, that being a part of the community, that being, that representing and knowing a community gives to you as a board member.
Mark, what about you as a teacher? I'm curious.
Yes, as a teacher, I mean, I heard this word several times, "representation." I think that's very important. Because as an elected school board member, they not only are going to represent themselves and their constituents, but be, you know, everybody. I'm talking about all the stakeholders that are involved, from teachers, to parents, students, communities that are involved. I don't want to go off track, but I remember back in 2012 when, just listening to all of these meetings that the board had, it was, it just seemed like no one was really listening, you know, to the concerns and problems and inequities that existed. And I think with this new school board, it'll bring on not only representation, but accountability, you know, as far as their jobs and what do they have to do to make things better in our schools. And the last is transparency. You know, just being able to, you know, be a person on that board who sees things and able to look at themselves and see that things are going to get done, you know, within our schools and our communities.
So one of the things about the legislation is that you cannot be a CPS employee and serve on the board. So if you were to want to run, you would have to, you know, quit your job or leave your job. And I do wonder, I think, from my time at City Hall covering aldermen, aldermen were deferred to as the experts of their community. Presumably, these 20 district board members, when we figure them out, when their districts are drawn and when we figure out who they are, they will become the representatives speaking for what the schools need. And I am curious, perhaps from Mark and Ginger, if you feel confident that we will get, you know, good candidates, candidates who can understand what's happening inside of schools and really understand how their decisions will impact classrooms? Are you, what would you like to see in the types of candidates who run and the kind of knowledge you'd like them to have about schools and education in Chicago?
I just have terrifying questions. So a CPS employee cannot run, and they're not going to get paid? Okay.
As the law is written.
It really was a question. I just wanted to make sure. I guess, at first glance, that feels a little stunning to me. It would be like having a student council without students on it. Perhaps, if we're adjusting some of the legislation, we would want to reserve seats for employees purposely for them. Maybe that can be done. But yeah, you need teachers in the room. I think you need a principal in the room. And so would we feel represented? Of course, can't speak for everyone, but the, schools seem simple, but they're so complex. And I don't know how to explain this work, not just my work, to others in a thorough fashion. I think to make great policy, you need a deep understanding of issues. You don't have to do the work to get it, but it certainly helps. So I don't, I guess I don't know is my answer to that question.
And I should clarify, too. I'm not sure that they prevent an employee from running, but once they would become elected, the way the law is written, they wouldn't be able to serve and still have their... CPS employees cannot serve on the board. So they could run, but then they'd have to quit, I guess.
I think it would be a fascinating thing to do. I also need a paycheck.
Right.
You know, so I think you're just going to limit your candidate pool. I don't know if that's a fixable piece of the legislation right now, but it is concerning. We would need to think through how to address that if that's the standard going forward or the law.
Mark, what would you like to see in candidates, candidate quality, and what candidates should brush up on if they would like to run?
Well, I think that the candidates should immediately go into the areas where they serve, get to know the people, the schools, communities, and find out what, you know, what, who they are representing. Because if they're elected, it's going to be elected from the people that lives in that community, in the city. So I think they need to get into those schools, into those communities, and see exactly what's going on. You know, just a story, a student that I taught that was having a lot of issues. And we kind of found out that they had a lot of issues at home. So if you don't know things, it's hard to help someone. So I think, as an elected school board member, they need to really know what's really going on. And then they'll know what issues that they need to attack and to help and do everything they can to make things better in our schools and our communities.
Dr. Melendez, I would like to ask you to, if you could explain, you obviously have a wealth of policy expertise, and you did coming into the role of an appointed board member. What advice would you have to anyone interested in running? What do they need to know before taking one of these seats as it relates to policy and education?
Well, I hope that, and this is not directly answering your question, which I'll do right away, but I think that the issue of representation is a big one. I think that there has to be a way of allowing teachers to serve in the board and parents. There is also, the legislation indicates that non-citizens cannot serve on the elected school board. And more than half of Chicago Public Schools students have at least one foreign-born parent, who may not be a, you know, a US citizen yet. So I think those issues are important. But in regards to advice, I would, I would, I think, echo what the others have said. The ability to listen and to engage with the community, not only to go and tell them what you think they need, but to listen to what they say they need, which is something I think we struggle as adults and sometimes as individuals that hold certain positions of power. And also, you know, be aware that it is a lot of work. There's a lot of hours that you have to dedicate to prepare for the briefings that you have before the school board if you are going to be well-informed for those briefings so you can bring questions. And also well-informed in how you're going to vote on the day of the school board. So another thing that I hope that will be solved before the full elected school is compensation. If individuals have to take time off from their work to be in a full-day board meeting, they need to be compensated for that and for the time that they invest in getting well-prepared in listening to the constituents and in also reading the briefing materials that the CPS staff and board staff prepares.
We've touched a few times on the fact that these districts are not drawn yet. We don't know what communities these members will represent. Valerie, could you explain why we don't know what these districts are yet and that the, how the deadline has gotten extended?
Yeah, sure. The legislature, they drew a couple example maps, I'll say, over the past several months. I think the first one I saw was back in May. There were at least two versions. The second was worse than the first. And, you know, there was a lot of frustration. I don't care who you are, what issues you represent. You know, you could be a black person that wanted to make sure that the black community was represented. You could be a Latino mom who wanted to make sure that the districts were drawn such that there's maximum representation from parents. You could be a white progressive on the North Side, making sure that your friends in Chinatown were adequately represented. I don't care who you were, you hated this map, right? And you hated the second one more than the first because it's almost as if people did not listen. And some, you know, the cynic in me makes me wonder, you know, was this intentional? You know, the state has just gone through a process of... You know, the state has just gone through a process of redistricting. We have to draw every 10 years districts for our state reps, right, and our state senators. So we've been doing this, I don't know, ever since, since, right? Because it's a constitutional duty. And it would seem to me that people who have experience drawing those maps would have drawn maps that were more clear. I could tell you some of the issues that we had as IAFR, and it's not just because we are a black group, and when I say IAFR, that's Illinois African-Americans for Equitable Redistricting. When you look at the boundaries and the way they were drawn, they divide communities. There was no rhyme or reason as to why the districts were drawn as they were. We just know that they split communities in very irrational ways and that was never addressed. We saw instances of racial gerrymandering and, and I don't want this to get so high in the clouds, but it looked to us like there were attempts to dilute black votes, particularly in Austin and East Garfield Park by skipping a couple of communities and linking that community to Ukraine Village, which didn't really make sense. I've never saw, saw, never seen that kind of clustering. So issues like that, and, you know, for every issue that we had, you know, I'm sure Brenda had several other issues, et cetera, et cetera. So things were so raucous on the day that they were expected to ram the, I'm sorry, they were expected to, to vote. I'm sorry, I'm a little traumatized from the state redistricting process. So they were poised to approve this map and the community. I don't care who you were, we just weren't having it.
Yeah, there were, there were some raucous hearings indeed. And this school and area and community, I think, was also linked to River North somehow. If I remember one of those maps correctly. River North. So there was a lot of oddities with the proposals that were on the table. So they have set a new deadline of April fir-, April 1st of 2024, which leaves about six months ahead of election for people to even know what district they live in. I do want to revisit something that Louisiana brought up and, and I'm asking you, want to start with Brenda here, the issue of non-citizen participation on the school board. So non-citizens won't be able to vote, they won't be able to serve for, on school boards, and yet we do have a number of, I mean, let, let, many students are the, the largest population in CPS. I'm curious, Brenda, from your perspective, how can lawmakers, you know, within the Voting Rights Act, do you, how do you think they should be able to square that issue of representation for non-citizen families? It's a big question, I realize.
You asked me to solve the problem?
We could do it right here in this room tonight if you guys want.
Well, I am able to vote now because someone before me, right, as a, as a female, someone before me did the work. So I think that they need to sit down and do the work. They need to figure out a way to allow not only parent voice or their representation of non-citizen voice, but also the vote. Because that is a large, a lot of our families are non-citizens.
Louisiana, I know that the legislation sets aside an advisory board for non-citizens. How do you, as somebody who sat on the board, how do you see that working? The relationship between the two?
Well, I mean, ideally, it, it would be very synergistic and very close. I, I, as far as I know, or at least during my time in the board, we did not have a formal advisory board. I think that would open the space for, you know, teachers, administrators that maybe were not willing to take a leave of absence to run for an elected board seat. But I do think that the process of selecting and developing the rules or whatever it is that they're called, that would govern, that the relationship between the board and the advisory board have to be very clear and very intentional. So it really doesn't become, oh, they meet once a year and, you know, they, but really they don't bring expertise, voices, opinions, points of view that can be very valuable for the board. I mean, like, being a board member is a huge responsibility. I know that I welcome conversations with the public, with groups, with teachers, with individuals that would let me make better informed decisions. Did, did that happen? Did I do that all the time? No, I did not. And I acknowledge it publicly. But I, I think that that is invaluable, to have external voices that can really bring a point of view to the board in a way that makes sense and that it, it, it's, it's really you, uh, uh, useful.
I have a final question for everyone, once we, we're running a little tight on time, but I did want to ask Valerie to, I know that your group has put forward a similar proposal for an advisory board for black students. Could you speak a little bit to that proposal and, and why you think that that would also be important?
Sure. As we were researching the, the legislation for the elected school board, we noticed a committee, it was an advisory, a diversity advisory committee, and it focused on non-citizen students. And we thought, you know, that is great, that's a great thing. And then we looked at our own situation as African-Americans, and if you look at the statistics, I mean, black kids are leading the pack in every negative category, you know, in terms of, you know, the school, the pipe, a school-to-prison pipeline, we have more truancy, we have attendance, yeah, discipline issues. And one might argue, well, you know, we have a Board of Education that has committees that are designed to serve all children, and that is true. But for some reason, you know, black kids are going further and further backwards and COVID did not help. And we are advocating for a committee that's very, very similar to the committee that was created by law. I, I don't know when it comes, when it's going to be enforced, but it is on the books to have a committee, and I think it's more important now than ever to have a committee for non-citizens. But at the same time, I think it's more important than ever to have a committee that is staffed by board members. You know, the, the one issue with, with the committee for non-citizens is it's not really a board committee, it's an advisory committee, which does not have the, the full teeth that a governing board would have. So we are advocating for a standing committee that will serve to, I guess, do a needs assessment, you know, look at the data, develop a plan after identifying issues and actually look at metrics. You know, we could talk all day long, but if we're not intentional about closing performance gaps and reducing the school-to-prison pipeline, we won't get anywhere. So we're actually tweaking that language so that it is more prescriptive, but at the same time, not dictating to the board how they should do this. We want to make sure that the work they're doing is being done by people who understand education, by people who have lived experience as black parents and people in the community. But we really, really want to make sure that we have, you know, people with education experience who understand research and strategic planning and all of that good stuff, but at the same time, drawing from people like, you know, the LSCs and the Parent Action Councils and all of that good stuff.
Great. We're getting close to seven o'clock. And to close out, I would like all of you to imagine that we have elected some new school board members, there's 21 people about to take their offices or seats or whatever they end up being. And you have been brought in to advise them on the first orders of business. What should they tackle first? What is the top priority, would you say, for a new school board? And maybe even for this current one that's appointed, what would you say to them? What do they need to focus on? If you could pick two things, what are the top two? We'll start with, with Ginger.
Okay, hi. So I've thought about this, I feel like it's a really tough question because I want them to get down to business. But what I think is really important is stability. Change doesn't have to be fast, change is important, but it needs to be measured. And so I would really, and that's the same thing I did when I took over the school, stability first, how can we stabilize things? And, and then deciding whether they agree with the vision or not. Does the vision and the roadmap to success for CPS make sense to them? Is that something they can get behind? As a committee of 21, you have to start there. That would be my advice, vision, stability.
Awesome. Valerie?
Yeah, one thing I would look at, there was a report, a couple, was it done last year, where they were looking at detangling the finances of CPS from the city of Chicago? When the board becomes an independent entity, so to speak, they're going to be taking on a number of expenses that heretofore they didn't have to pay for themselves. And one thing that I think either was overlooked in the report or I didn't see it, was the potential impact on community development. And when I say that, half of the TIF revenue comes from Chicago Public Schools and the way TIFs are actually brought on board, you have a rubber stamp committee comprised of all the representatives of different taxing bodies that could be impacted. And now that's a rubber stamp. I believe with an elected school board, especially with the personalities that are currently on board, you know, there's going to be less deference to the city. So there could potentially be less money available for, for the TIFs, you know, for creating new TIFs and new development. I also think that there needs to be significant capacity building in terms of developing, you know, real structure. And I, I know that sounds very boring and people really want to do the work of the board, but if you don't have structures in place, you know, as Dr. Melendez said, you know, you can have all these committees, but if there's no prescriptive language as to how you're going to actually implement all of these wonderful ideas, it's all for naught. So somebody needs to be paying attention to that kind of stuff.
Brenda, what about you as a parent? What are the first orders of business you want them to tackle?
Wow. For me, I mean, I send my son to school to get an education. So the first thing is, how do we improve the education our children are getting inside public schools? So we are a world-class city, I said this before, and how do we move to get the world-class education? So that would be.
Dr. Melendez?
Well, I fully endorse every single idea. And I'm sure I will endorse Mark's as well. But for me, if I, I, what would be my, you know, my advice for the board would be that CPS becomes a district, but by acknowledging the strengths, the knowledge and the experiences that all children and families bring to school, that CPS becomes the first school district that can really tackle the opportunity gap, which is based on hegemonic beliefs about some knowledge is being more important than others and some experiences not being conducive to learning the, the, the subject matter that is at the center of school. That doesn't have to be like that. And I think in denying the, you know, communities to contribute the incredible wealth and strength that they have to curriculum, to school governance, we are really losing a, a, something that could be life-changing for all the students and the families in CPS.
And Mark, close us out. For teachers, what would you tell them? What do they need us to do? What do we need them to do?
Well, two things that, that ring out to me is representation and accountability. I mean, I think that those board members should see this recording of this event with these fabulous people on this panel and listen to each and every one of our voices. I mean, the board is responsible for ensuring that, you know, CPS is providing high-quality education to all students, you know, developing, approving CPS budget, academic policies, priorities, district operations, you know, contracts with vendors, schools, other entities. I mean, stakeholders, as we all are, we, you know, listen, just listen to our voices and listen to our concerns and, and just be representative of that and be accountable.
I would love to give a round of applause to everyone up here. You guys are truly the experts and we thank you so much for all of your time and expertise and your thoughts. And to everyone who came, it was really wonderful to be here. I'm now going to invite Karina. Hello, she will close us out and there will be, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Okay, that was incredible. I can. Okay. Podiums make me very like stiff and rigid, so I'm going to walk away from that. And thank you all so much for participating in this event with your awesome and unique and very true perspectives. And Becky, you're an expert moderator, thank you so much. So my name is Karina Demma and I'm an organizer with E for E Chicago. Other things about me, I'm a CPS graduate, I'm a former CPS teacher, and I'm a mom of two kids in CPS. So yes, my family is very passionate about equitable public education. You guys, I've had an elected school board now sign in my window for 12 years. So I am really happy, but also very concerned. I think that it's really important for us to gather and commit to our civic responsibilities by having these kinds of public discourse and conversations. But we need to keep pushing our civic responsibilities and hold our elected officials accountable. So tonight, what, that was loud. Tonight, what I would like to do is ask you all, we're going to change the screen in a minute, and we're going to ask you to sign a petition that is going to request a meeting with the co-chairs of the Special Senate Committee on the Chicago Elected School Board. So we're sending this petition to Senator Martwick and Senator Lightford, and we want them to meet with our teachers, community members before the school year starts. So that's a pretty tight turnaround, but I think we can do it. So if you would just scan this QR code to sign that petition, and then when we leave, we're going to hand out little half-sheet flyers for you to take back to your communities, and I hope that you will, so we can use our voices and get this right. This is so critical, we all have been waiting for it for so long, and it's finally here. So let's take the opportunity to get it right for our students. Because we're all stakeholders, whether you have children or not. What happens here is going to have a ripple effect for all Chicagoans for years and years to come. So with that, I hope that you'll join us for coffee and cookies out in the lobby. And thank you for coming. And just maybe one more round of applause for these wonderful panelists. Thank you again for coming. Everyone who was able to come tonight got to hear our amazing panel emphasize that the work around the elected school board is not done. We know the transition is coming, but there's a lot to figure out and the integrity of our entire education system in Chicago is at stake. We need lawmakers to treat this issue with the urgency that it deserves. School board's responsible for so many important decisions about what happens in Chicago Public Schools. We hope that you'll join us in calling Senators Martwick and Lightford, who chair the special committee on the elected school board, to meet with Educators for Excellence Teacher Action Team. And we invite you to sign up to be an engaged stakeholder in calling for this work to really get the attention and focus that it deserves.